Okay, good evening, everyone. We are going to call our meeting to order. Welcome to our council meeting tonight, and we'll have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
If you all stand, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by our council member, John Franklin.
(Inaudible). (Inaudible).
Also, our invocation today will be given by Nancy Jones, the president of the Women's Club of Vista.
Mayor Ritter and city council members, new and old, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and share this time of inspiration with you. I'm proud to represent the Women's Club of Vista, which has served Vista for 99 years, and Alta Vista Botanical Gardens, where we're developing a beautiful nature retreat and garden at the top of the hill in the middle of Bringle Terrace Park. If you would like, please remain standing for the invocation. Let us take a few minutes, moments, together to reflect on our lives and our world, and be grateful. Thank you, Almighty God, for the beauty of our world and our community. Thank you for our children, who give us hope for our future, and for the gift of our children's smiles, their laughter, their ingenuity, and their open hearts. Thank you, God, for the opportunities we have to serve others, to help them improve their lives, to get their educations, to have homes and be safe at home. Thank you, God, for the opportunities we have to lead and to follow, to cooperate and plan to improve our community. Thank you for those who serve in the military and their families here at home. Watch over them, keep them safe. Thank you, God, for our families and friends, our coworkers and co-volunteers. And dear God, help this council reflect with dignity and courtesy to provide the best for our city and its citizens. With grateful hearts, we thank you. Amen.
Thank you. And according to the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
We did have a closed session today. Our city attorney, Darryl Piper, will bring us out of that.
Thank you very much. The council met today in closed session on items CS1 and CS2. No action was taken. Nothing is required to be reported.
Okay, we have three presentations today, and the first one, I will have Katrina Patterson will please come down to the podium and join me to accept a proclamation declaring Thursday, February 26th, to be Katrina Patterson Day in the City of Vista, in honor of being chosen at the Vista Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year. So come down. (Audio cut off). Right here. Get it here. I'm going to do this. Put it like this, so you can get your picture taken with it in a minute. Okay? So let me read the proclamation for her. So it says, "Whereas, on January 29th, Katrina Patterson was named 2014 Boys and Girls Club Vista Youth of the Year. The Boys and Girls Club of Vista provides a safe place to learn and grow, develop relationships with caring adult professionals, offers life-enhancing programs and character development experiences. Katrina has attended the Boys and Girls Club since 2009, and she's assisted with the club's Power Hour programs, which help middle and elementary school-aged children achieve academic success. Katrina also regularly assists in the game room with Project FUN, which is FUN stands for Fitness, Understanding, and Nutrition." So she helps with those activities. She also assists with the club's volleyball programs that offer practice preparation, games, and skill clinics. Whereas Katrina's presence has been greatly appreciated by the club because she successfully connects with the kids that are primarily from disadvantaged circumstances, and she has consistently brought a positive attitude to her volunteer work that the children naturally gravitate to. So now, therefore, the mayor and members of our Vista City Council congratulate Katrina Patterson on her being chosen 2014 Boys and Girls Club Vista Youth of the Year, and we hereby proclaim tomorrow, Wednesday, February 25th, 2015, as Katrina Patterson Day in the City of Vista. So congratulations.[556.54][556.54](Applause). Nguyen. It's going to come up here. We have a proclamation for J.C. Nguyen. J.C.[589.29][589.29](Laughs). Okay. Yes, here you are. This is for you. And then we're going to read, and I'm going to read J.C.'s proclamation. So J.C. was actually our City of Vista's 2014 Person of the Year. So whereas, J.C. Nguyen is the recipient of the City of Vista's 2014 Person of the Year Award. J.C. has exemplified the spirit of service that is at the very heart of the Vista community, helping bond us together. Over the years, J.C. has spent many hours volunteering his time and raising funds for the numerous Vista organizations, usually benefiting youth and senior members of our community. J.C. has been involved with Vista's Pop Warner and High School Sports Programs and the Sports Foundation. He's also served as the Santa Claus in the Chamber's Christmas Parade and as a person responsible for raising funds each year to join the Pride of Vista Lions Club in hosting a community Easter egg hunt at Bringle Terrace Park. Whereas J.C. was instrumental in working with three businesses to organize the Vista Teen Outreach to feed hungry students in our local schools. The first year, the group initiated food pantries in six schools. Three years later, the program has expanded into 13 schools. Oh, I have a blank piece of paper right here that has nothing on it. Whereas, the word to describe J.C. is a doer, and when J.C. hears about a person in need, whether it is a child, a teenager, an adult, or a senior, he will do anything to help that person. So now you know who to call.[674.23][674.23](Laughs). Now, the mayor and members of the Vista City Council congratulate J.C. Nguyen on the selection as the City of Vista's 2014 Person of the Year, and hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 25th. Does it say Wednesday, too? I thought it was Tuesday. Let's see. Is it Wednesday? Yep, it is. Wednesday, February 25th, as J.C. Nguyen Day in the City of Vista. Yay! Your passion for Vista and genuine dedication in helping others inspires us all, so thank you, J.C., for all you've done and continue to do for our community. So congratulations.[705.82][705.82](Applause). We'll get a picture.
(Inaudible).
Well, here, you say a few words.
Here, I got a big one on this.
Okay, there's your, now's your chance.
It's just a few seconds, but there's a lot of things, a few things I got to say, because, you know, they say I do all this and all this and all this, but you know what I really do? Is I really just let other people know what needs to be done and then just help them get it done as, you know, a community should. But a few things I got to just tell everybody is that I grew up on the streets of Vista, and I was a juvenile delinquent. And I know a lot of people in my past would look at this and go, "Oh, how did this happen?" But it's like the old saying goes, is you just can't judge a book by the cover. And there's some very special people that I got to really say thanks to. For one is the lady that pulled me out of the trenches in the 10th grade was my wife, Dawn. I met her in October of 1974, and we just celebrated our 35th wedding anniversary this past 16th.
Congratulations.[786.26][786.26](Applause).
And then, and then there's a few other people, like the fellas up at R&amp;R So Belivin, who always come out and help set up the stages or pick up the trash or whatever else we want to do, or the fellas over at Casa Rafael. They're always out there when we plant soccer fields, they're digging the trenches for the sprinklers and stuff like that. And then the various businesses that are always stepping up, Andy Glass and Danny over there at the Pepper Tree Frosty, and let's not forget about Danny's Donuts. You know, they're always helping out, too. But the one thing I just really want to say is that we got to remember that their kids are our future. Every one of our kids deserve everything we have to offer them. They're our future, and one day, they will be taking care of us when we get old. So we got to always remember that. We got to take care of them now. You know, love and direction are two of the most important things we can give them. You know, the skate parks and the pictures with Santa Claus and the Easter egg hunts, those are all just frosting on their cupcakes, you know? Love and direction, and you'd be surprised, almost every kid would be a good kid if they got love and direction, so. And closing, I'd like to thank my mayor, because she's always there. When he even went on batch, she's there taking care of me. So, and the Chamber of Commerce is always stepping up to help Santa Claus, and the city council, who sometimes will come up and scold them when they're being bad, but hey, they scolded me, so (laughs) sure game. But I like to say, God bless all of you, and thank you so much for doing this for me.[885.43][885.43](Applause).
Okay, so the next thing on our agenda, we have a presentation on the fiscal year 2013-14 audit by Brian Gruber, partner with Lance Soil and, is it Soil and?
Soil.
Soil and Lundgaard. I have to put my glasses on. Okay, so, Brian here?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Gruber with LSL CPAs. We're the independent auditors for the City of Vista, and we were engaged to conduct a financial audit for the City of Vista's June 30, 2014 financial statements. An audit involves the testing of the account balances and also assessing internal controls in place for the City of Vista. Internal controls are those policies and procedures that safeguard the city's assets and also help to detect and correct any material errors that might occur in the financial statements. A little bit about our audit process this year. We conducted our audit in a couple of different phases. Our first phase is our interim audit, and we conducted that during the fiscal year in the month of May. It involves various planning that we perform, and a risk assessment, and a review of internal controls. We obtain this information through various inquiry throughout the city and documentation of the city's internal controls and processes. We come back for our final audit, which this past year occurred in the month of September through October, and we do various account analysis. We send out third-party confirmations to all the city's cash and investments, all the financial institutions, and also to other receivables and other items to get confirmation that they agree with what's being reported in the city's financial statements. We also do various cutoff procedures to make sure that the financial information gets reported into the correct period, at period close. And all this work is done to produce what's called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR. The CAFR is divided into a couple of different key sections. The first, the first part of the CAFR is the introductory section, and it's encouraged to kind of provide an introductory to the financial statements. This would be the transmittal letter. And then also, there's the financial section, which includes our independent auditor's report in conjunction with management's discussion and analysis. And this is really intended to be a short, quick overview of the financial statements. As you know, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is quite lengthy, and this is a short kind of Reader's Digest version of the financial results. And then also included are the financial statements themselves and the footnotes. In the back of the financial statement is various statistical, is called the statistical section, includes various statistical historical information for the city regarding population and different financial trends over, over a period of 10 years. We do all the, all the work for our financial in order to express an opinion, to render an opinion on the financial statements. Management is responsible for the information that goes into the report, and our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion to make sure that that information is properly stated in all material respects. We express what's called in audit language, an unmodified opinion. This would be the best opinion that you can receive in a financial statement audit. In conjunction with our audit, we're also required to communicate to the city council matters regarding internal control. If we had identified deficiencies in the structure or had problems when we were conducting our audit, we would be required to communicate this to you. Certain deficiencies called material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Pleased to report that we didn't have any such deficiencies noted as part of our audit. We also are required to communicate to the city council any difficulties that we had performing the audit, if we had a disagreement with management regarding the application of accounting principle or what's being reported in the financial statements, and also if we had any other audit findings or issues, pleased again to report that we did not report any such matters. We also provided some information related to upcoming governmental accounting standards boards changes. And most significant would be the implementation next for this upcoming fiscal year, June 30, 2015, for GAZB, what we call GAZB 68, which has to do with pension guidance. Previously, pensions had just been disclosed as footnote disclosure in the financial statement, but for the upcoming year, that's actually going to get rolled up and recorded and put into the statements themselves. So it's a change in application that's rather significant, so it's something to be aware of. So overall, in conclusion, LSL has been engaged to conduct a financial audit. We have issued the Comprehensive Annual Financial Statements Report for June 30, 2014, and issued an unmodified opinion. We also issued our report on internal control and audit communication, and, you know, no, no deficiencies or matters were reported. So with that, that's, that's my presentation. If you do have any questions, I hear, but otherwise...
Do you have any questions from the council? No, seen none. Thank you so much for your report. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the city clerk. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And we have two items that are being pulled tonight by the council and the speaker, pulling item C7 and C11. Do I see any other items that anyone would want to pull down? Okay, so seen none of that, entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
So moved.
Can we have a motion in a second? Please, cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. So then we will go to the next item, is item C7, which is the CIP 8276, our Skate Park Project, which is a design-build agreement award. And I think I'd like to have, if we could have a report, and then we'll have a, we have a speaker, and then we'll go from there.
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. John Conley, Community Development Director. With me, I have Skip Hammond, our consultant, who's helping us tonight with the project. The Skate Park Project is a capital improvement program budget item for two skate parks on North Santa Fe. These are sites that came before the council in May of last year and were selected as sites to pursue a skate park on. In September of last year, we sent out a request for proposals, and we received four responses to those, to that request. They were from American Ramp, Spawn Ranch, Grind Line, and California Skate Parks. Those are the four companies that submitted proposals to us. Staff reviewed the four proposals, and there was a clear demarcation between two of the firms, and so the top two firms were selected for interviews, which were done by a staff panel, as well as the Vista Skate Park Coalition, who's here tonight as well. And the recommendation of the committee was for Grind Line, which we received a design-build proposal from. It's before you this evening. It's split into three phases. The first two phases are pre-design and construction documents, which is what we're asking for this evening. It's for $176,000 roughly. And the third phase would be construction of the project, which, once we go through the community design process, we'll come back, once we have a better picture of the total cost of the project for council approval of the construction funds. And that's my staff presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to hear the speakers first? Okay, Lisa Flattery? Flaherty? I said it wrong, sorry, Lisa.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Lisa Flaherty with the Vista Skate Park Coalition, and we are present this evening to support city staff and coalition membership in awarding the agreement for the skate park design build to Grind Line Skate Parks Incorporated. After months of providing builder information for council and staff, a request for proposal was called in September of 2014. Four proposals were received in October of 2014, and from those proposals, two qualified finalists were selected. Those two finalists were interviewed by a panel of city staff and coalition members in December of 2014, with the deciding vote going to Grind Line Skate Parks Incorporated. Tonight, that selection and recommendation is presented to the council as consent calendar item number C7, and we respectfully request that the council provide final approval for our selection and award the design-build agreement to Grind Line Skate Parks. We would also like to take a moment to thank Mayor Ritter and each council member, as well as the city staff, for all of their ongoing support, the time, and the work that you've put into this project, and for providing the City of Vista with two great skate parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So it was, the item was pulled also by council member Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the report. I appreciate it and for your comments, Lisa. As you know, as a former Parks and Rec Commissioner, I was a huge fan and have been very supportive of the skate parks all along for many, many years now, and I'm glad that we're at this point. I did have a lot of questions after reading the staff report about the process, some of the other people who put in a proposal, and those questions have been answered for me, and I appreciate staff coming back to me with those, with that information and to the city manager. But I do have two questions still. How many times did Grind Line visit the skate park sites physically? Do we know? Were they here?
We know they visited the site at least one time during the period that they came down for our interview, but we're not aware of how many times they visited the site beyond that.
Okay, thank you. And then the second one is, on page 38 of 42, the fee schedule for it says, "The scope of work includes design for a prefab restroom." Now, having visited many skate parks throughout San Diego County and in Orange County, prefab restrooms are usually porta-potties? Or we're not doing porta-potty? We're doing something better than that, correct?
That is the plan. We intend to look at all of the design issues along with the project in the conceptual phase, including a restroom, and we will be coming back to the council with staff recommendation of what facilities should be placed on the site. So we'll be having that discussion, but the decision has not been made yet. That was just to give them an understanding that we believe a restroom facility will be needed at one of the sites.
Absolutely, just not porta-potty. Okay, thank you. You've answered my questions, and I appreciate you coming in and talking. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
With that, I'd like to move that we accept C7.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
John, did you want to say something on here?
No, I was just going to second it, sorry.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next item will be item C11. That's Centro Vista Business Improvement District, and council member Rigby is pulling that.
Yes.
Would you want to report?
I don't need a report particularly, thank you.
And merely, we're talking, we're setting a public hearing for the future, not to discuss the whole issue today.
Yes, I understand that. Thank you. And that was my, my question was regarding the public hearing. It says in the staff report that the businesses within the Business Improvement District will be noticed via newspaper article publication with it, with seven days prior notice to the hearing. Now, these are businesses in the district that are actually assessed a tax to be in this district. They pay money to the city, and it seems to me, the last couple of times we've had issues or we've had a discussion with the bid, after that has happened, I've gotten a couple of phone calls from people. And I would like to see that notice of the hearing be more than just the newspaper, and I understand that we might be doing that now, sending them a letter, but I still think seven days is an adequate time, because some of the people might be sole proprietors that have to work out somebody to take over their business while they come to the hearing or have to close and make arrangements with their clients. So I would like to see that the mailed notification that they will be receiving be at least 14 days. Can we do that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That was, my only issue was on notice of the hearing. So with that, I would like to go ahead and move that we accept C11.
I'll, okay.
So there will be a mailing?
Yes.
Yes, there'll be a mailing to each business. Okay, and did you want to say something else?
(Inaudible).
Okay, I'll second. I don't know if we have a second, I'll second, but, so please cast your votes.
Thank you.
That motion passes unanimously. That motion passes unanimously, which brings us to our discussion item. Hold on. And so our discussion item tonight is the bike lanes and removal of parking on the Civic Center Drive. And again, if you, anybody would like to speak to that, usually discussion items require detailed explanation by staff and agency member input. So tonight, we just have that one discussion item. So if you'd like to speak on it, please fill out a request-to-speak and submit it to the city clerk. And with that, oh, John Conley is going to take that item again, our Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sam Hossen and our City Traffic Engineer will be providing the presentation.
Good evening. Just some background on the bike lanes and no parking on Civic Center Drive. The city council approved the Bicycle Master Plan last month, and of course, the Bicycle Master Plan is a long-range planning document that is intended to provide guidance on the future development and implementation of bike facilities and programs in the city. The plan also identifies 20 projects as priority projects for bicycle facility implementation, and Civic Center Drive is one of those top 20 projects for implementation of striped bike lanes. So the current physical conditions on Civic Center, the segment between the 78 and Sierra Verde Drive, as well as the segment between Eucalyptus and East Vista Way, do not currently have adequate width to accommodate striped bike lanes in addition to the existing travel lanes and the median. But the segment between Sierra Verde Drive and Eucalyptus Avenue can accommodate bike lanes with the removal of existing on-street parking. So just kind of for, to show the area, that segment highlighted in red is the segment between Sierra Verde and Eucalyptus Avenue. And this is from the Bicycle Master Plan, showing a cross-section of the proposal to describe bike lanes. It shows the four existing travel lanes painted median in bike lanes and buffers. So this segment is classified as a four-lane major road in the current circulation element of the general plan, and in accordance with the circulation element, a four-lane major road does not provide for on-street parking. And this is a cross-section from the circulation element that shows a four-lane major, the top cross-section, which shows travel lanes, bike lane, and sidewalk. So we also have a slurry seal project currently in the works that includes the segment of Civic Center Drive, which provides an opportunity for restrypping. Therefore, we recommend installing bike lanes and removing existing on-street parking along the segment between Sierra Verde Drive and Eucalyptus Avenue. That's our presentation.
Okay, that's the, I have two speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers? Okay. First speaker is Lisa Wellens.
Madam Mayor, city council members, my name's Lisa Wellens. I'm a resident of Vista, and I live in the downtown area. I'm in favor of removing parking for the installation of bike lanes on Civic Center Drive. I'm concerned about the safety of street parking and the effect on cyclists and motorists. It would be safest to have a continuous lane without breaks. The stretch of road has, also has a hill. It's busy, and cyclists move slower as they go up the hill. It would be a benefit to both the cyclist and the motorist to have a separate lane for bikes without the need for cars to pass and slow into traffic. Or if a bike lane stops and starts around street parking, you force cyclists out into the road, possibly at a slower speed, and that also creates an unsafe situation. So I think that safety should outweigh the needs of the business owners in this case. If business owners or any of us get the benefit of publicly providing parking, it's great, and it's a bonus, and we should do it if we can, but I'm not sure that it should come at the expense of safety of the people who use the road. And also, there's a cost of doing this now with the road being resurfaced. It seems to make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just briefly, with parking removed on Civic Center Drive in this area between Sierra Verde and East Vista Way, those cars that currently use, that are going to be compelled to park in the residential areas, basically on their front lawn, which is against code. Some of those residents have been turned into businesses, and they perhaps have paved their front lawn and turned it into a parking lot, which is good, but there still are several residents along that path, and I think that needs to be considered, or at least looked at, when this change happens to make sure that we're not encouraging people to park on their front lawn, essentially.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of our speakers, and so, oh, Councilmember Campbell.
I was just going to say I'm in favor of not only this particular part of it, but moving forward in the future for implementing the Bicycle Master Plan in our circulation element. I think this is good not only for the safety of bicyclists on Civic Center Drive, but also for drivers along Civic Center where the speed often exceeds the posted speed limit in cars coming out, particularly on the hill through there. Trying to get into, merging back into traffic creates a safety issue, in my opinion. I think that the businesses in that area have adequate onsite parking, and I think it's a good plan. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and move that we adopt this item.
Anybody else want to speak? We're a quiet group tonight. Do you have, you second it? Okay.
I'll second it, yeah, sorry.
Anything else? Nobody else? Well, I'll talk. I just, I worry also about the, because I know there's certain places where the people park. They don't park all the way on the street, they park, but I worry because, I worry about like in front of the Civic Center, they have, we have a thing called a shareos, and so there's only two ways through town. One is East Vista Way, or Vista Village Drive, that goes into East Vista Way, and then the other one is Civic Center Drive. And so when, at 5:00 or 4:30, when the traffic gets heavy, and there's a bike, we can, it'll go in the bike lane, and then in front of Civic Center, for those couple of blocks, it's going to be, you have to share the road. So if you see a bike in front of you, you have to slow down and stay behind that bike, and you have to stay at least, I think, is it three feet away? The new, like, I think the new rule that they passed...
Three feet side to side.
Three feet side to side.
If you pass them, it has to be three feet away at least.
Yes, three feet side to side. So that kind of, you really can't pass them, you'd have to be in the other lane, so we have, people have to be, have to know about that. So my solution was that, my solution always is, is why can't they ride on the sidewalk? Because there aren't very many pedestrians, but apparently my city doesn't like that idea. So, anyway, oh, I see some more speakers. Okay, Councilmember Aguilera.
I did want to address the parking on the lawn issue. You know, we do have code enforcement that can handle that, so I think that's going to be a non-issue. And, you know, I think some of those, there are rentals usually that are parking on the street. I think they're going to have to find a place on their driveway to park their cars, and it'll make the road safer, not only for bicyclists, but I think for motorists as well. So that's one of the reasons I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
I have the copy that we talked about last month of the Bicycle Master Plan and the study that was done by Chen Ryan on the, when they did the bicycle count for the cyclists. And on that stretch of road, during their monitoring period, there was one cyclist on the road and zero cyclists on the sidewalk. I just wanted to remind people.
Okay, so I guess, with no more speakers, I don't know if I'm ready to vote, because I don't know which way to vote, but, okay. Cast your votes. Okay. Okay, we have, that motion passed as four to one, and I, that was tough for me. So the next thing on our thing, we don't have any oral communications. I don't see any slips for oral communications, so then we will go to our remarks. And so we'll do, I guess I'll do my remarks first, and then we'll go on down the line and get everybody. So my comments are, the city is still accepting applications for several city commissions. If you have time to volunteer in one of the commissions, please contact the city clerk or learn more about the openings online at cityofvista.com. The second thing, if you're thinking about opening a small business, learn more at Vista's library workshop on Saturday, February 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, and you'll get free access to business consultants and learn more about logo design and marketing tools. For more information on that, you'll call the library at 760-643-5100. A third thing, before investing in home energy upgrades, head to the Free Community Workshop on Wednesday, March 11th, from 6:00 to 7:30 to learn how to lower your energy bill. The event is here at the Civic Center in the Morse B. Vance Community Room, and you can register online at energycenter.org/vista. And one last thing, the Moonlight Stage Productions of Ana and the Tropics opens Thursday, March 12th, and runs through March 29th, and ticket information is available at moonlightstage.com. So those are pretty much my announcements, and I will start, I'll start with Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I want to say thank you to staff for the work that you do for us. I appreciate your time and your energy and answering all of my questions. And thank you to everybody for coming here this evening. February, as you know, we talked about this before, February is American Heart Health Month, and this weekend, the last weekend of February, in conjunction with the American Heart Association of San Diego, we are going to be hosting our second annual Red High Heels Walk in downtown Vista, starting at the Pub Saturday at noon. No high heels are required. A lot of people have been saying, "I don't want to wear high heels. You don't have to wear high heels." We just want you to be there, there's no entry fee. It's just a short walk, it's to raise awareness, and I hope we can see as many of you there as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Franklin. Remarks? Councilmember Campbell?
No comments this evening.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to thank everyone that came out for the Lions Club fundraiser pancake breakfast that we had this Saturday. Very successful, we raised thousands of dollars. All the money goes back to the city, whether it's back to the recreation program or to the city, other community groups. 100% of the money goes back. We raised, I'm not positive, but I think we raised probably in the range of $6,000 or $7,000, so it was very successful, and I want to thank the community for supporting our youth. Thank you.
And our city manager.
No remarks.
No remarks tonight? Wow. Okay, and our city attorney, Darrell...
Has no remarks either. Thank you, Mayor.
Our city clerk has none either? Well, with that, we are adjourned.